I call the June 11, 2020, special meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order. Hello, everyone. I'm John Rowe. I understand from our city clerk, Deborah White, that we have more than 230 people, citizens, watching this live stream. And our first order of business is to call the roll. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. This is Madam. We have to unmute in order to get the roll. The Madam?
Here.
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 Here. Mr. Moody.
Here.
Ms. Simmons.
Here.
Mayor Reh.
Here. Because this is a virtual meeting, it's necessary for me to state the following. In accordance with Governor Ralph Northam's declaration of a state emergency due to the COVID-19 virus and his executive order number 51, which he signed on March 12, 2020, and the local declaration of emergency, which was ratified by this council, the Portsmouth City Council, and due to the COVID-19 pandemic, which is continuing in the Commonwealth of Virginia, this special call meeting of the Portsmouth City Council is being held by video conference on this, the 11th day of June, without a quorum present in the city council chambers. And we're doing this in order to reduce the likely spread of the COVID-19 virus. And this is in accordance with City Council Resolution 2020-21. Now, each member of council is participating from their home or some other remote location. And I'm in the city council chamber. And Madam Clerk, we do have 100% attendance?
That's correct, sir.
And just for our information, how many people are viewing the live stream?
Currently, 288.
We nearly almost have 300 people. Given the fact that we have 300 people, it's my goal to make this a public meeting. I think that it's important that we have this discussion in public and not in a closed session. The purpose of this meeting is to talk about the event of last night, June 10, that happened on Court Street, near its intersection with Hyde Street, at the Confederate monument. With that, I'll open the floor up to any questions by any member of council.
Mayor Reh, this is Elizabeth Simmons.
Yes, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. I would like the city manager, or attorney, or perhaps Chief Green, if she's in attendance, to sort of give us the events of the day prior to when the spray cans came out. You know, the crowd size, what was going on, that sort of thing, what led up to the vandalism that began with paint. For us to sort of have a feel of what was going on, for those of us who weren't there.
Counselwoman Simmons, just let me make sure. Tell me, prior to what particular point?
Prior to the mid-afternoon, when the vandalism began with spray paint.
Okay. As you all will recall, and I made mention early in the afternoon, yesterday evening, around 11:45, there was, the prior night, there was about 30 people that arrived on scene. Chief Green and I consulted on what the issues were, what the motivation of the demonstrators were, and part of their rationale as to why the issues were not clear-cut, was some of the discussion council had the prior night. So the discussion, as I understood it, between the chief and the demonstrators was whether or not they could do things that could be removed as part of a demonstration. And that was the determination at that time, to do things that could be removed, with the understanding they would be removed in the morning. I believe the folks were out there, I think I was on and off the phone with Chief Green until maybe about 2:00 in the morning. Seems like it was 2:00 in the morning, it was early. I was asleep, so I can't give you the precise time here. In the morning, there was some continued demonstration. My recollection is, or my impression was, we did not have a police presence there throughout the time period. The next event, in terms of my calendar, was some discussions with regard to the status of two demonstrators who were inside of the fence. And discussions I had with Chief Green at that time, I think I sent you all some, at least one email, if not two emails, about the status of things and the concerns that were being raised. As I understand, there may have been someone who was in support of the monument also, who was on the statue property throughout the morning. At least there were some reports of that. At the discussion, when I spoke with Chief Green, there was some concern about some issues that may occur in the evening, and the fact that the demonstrators, some of the demonstrators that were there, were still inside the fence. That's when there was a discussion about the ramifications and the applicable laws with regard to dealing with those particular individuals. And then, that action was taken, I think, very shortly thereafter, or actually simultaneously with that action. There was the notice to have the special meeting. And then, as I understand it, between the time staff started the preparation for the special meeting, and when the special meeting occurred, is when I understand, I can't give you a precise time, I understand the spray painting began. I think I got that second or third hand before the meeting actually started.
Okay, well, I don't mean to, I don't want to interrupt you, I don't want to interrupt you for a minute.
Sure.
Thousands of people watched on livestream video provided by local and national media, that there were maybe what appeared to be, on the media channels, maybe 30, 40 people tops, around the monument area, at around 2:00 in the afternoon, when some elected officials arrived, and there were, there was some, I will give the Vice Mayor her due, she made a very impassioned talk to the folks that were there, explaining to them, again, that the city was following the protocols and requirements set out by the state of Virginia on our 30-day notice for a public hearing, which had been set, and, you know, that we were moving along just as quickly as humanly possible as the law would allow. And the camera would pan over to a bunch of folks standing there with spray cans, shaking the tank cans. And then sometime after that, was when all the spray painting, or what I will classify as, it went from civil unrest to vandalism, began. It wasn't huge crowds of people, there weren't that, didn't appear to be that many people there at that point. And then it escalated from there, in the afternoon. And so I think my question, which is probably shared, certainly has been shared by many via email to the whole city council, and a lot of phone calls today, is, you know, at that point, there weren't hundreds of people there, there weren't thousands of people there, there were, certainly didn't appear to be more than 50. Why wouldn't we stop, if we stopped somebody from standing inside the fence, you know, having, you know, civil disobedience, discourse, why did we not stop vandalism of spray paint at whatever time that was in the afternoon? That's the crux of the question.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council, what I will, I can't give you the rationale at that precise time, because I'm not aware of it. But what I am aware of, I believe the chief, is asking for a state investigation, as well as staff has discussed a post-action report. And I believe that will give you the sort of the timeline and the decision points within that process, as we develop that sort of post-action.
We need that state investigation, because somewhere along the way-
Yes, we do.
Something, some wires got crossed, because I cannot imagine that our chief of police would decide to not take action on vandalism of any public or private property. I am delighted and pleased, as the mayor's statement that was put out a little earlier today, that the vandalism was confined to a, you know, a very small area, and by the time all those people were there, no, bringing in a lot of police officers would have certainly escalated the situation. But at that early afternoon time, there weren't that many people there. That's the point I don't get. And I think that's the point most of the citizens don't get, is why, you know, if that's the case, you know, when does it boil over to other city property?
Mayor, can I say something?
Mayor, can I? This is Bill Moody. Can I say something?
Yeah, I'm finished. Thank you.
Sorry.
Can you have it on?
Yeah.
Thank you. Bill, I'll come to you. Dr. Patton, you-
Mayor, Vice, excuse me, Mayor. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of city council, at about 11:47 last evening, I was informed by Chief Green that she was ordering a situational investigation, and a state police investigation, which she had already spoken to police in regard to the investigation, regarding the protest. And in addition, I was advised that the scene right now is still a scene under investigation, because there was an injury. And so, I followed up, as you know, when such investigation has to take place, that is the review of all kinds of information, from Bonner Ward cameras to all kinds of things. So as soon as that report is complete with the state police, there will be a presentation.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. Bill Moody's got the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my comment is directed to the city manager. What direction have we given as far as the scope of investigation to the state police? Because people are concerned, and it's documented on video, that we had a state senator who was present and very active at the scene, directing our police department not to get involved, not to make any arrests. Now, that's documented on video, and obviously, it's social media being social media, a lot of people are aware of that. And I want the investigation to include who gave the chief orders to stand down. I was at the scene last night, and the chief was distraught over her, the police officer getting criticized for standing there while the vandalism was occurring. So I want to make sure the scope of investigation includes the stand-down order. There seems, there seems to be a lot of scuttles up on how that order came about. We know about the video-
Yes, that we know.
But we don't know the others involved. We do know, as councilmembers, that the police needs answers to the city manager, not to individual councilmembers. Also, in Mr. Ashby's opening comments, he said that the protesters, early in the day, I think he mentioned 11:45, were told that they could do things that could be removed. Now, the two gentlemen that were arrested later questioned that, and I questioned that. They said, yesterday, or earlier in the day, you told us that we could, we could access the site. Today, we're being arrested for doing that. So if we give mixed signals, and I'm saying this rhetorically, because hopefully this will be answered in the state police investigation, you can't give people direction that they could do things that can be removed. That's a wide field. Also, the scene as it stands now, hopefully, we've considered that as a crime scene, since a gentleman was critically injured. And I think all of us know that probably a lawsuit potentially could ensue. So I think that we need to consider that as a crime scene, and take all precautions to make sure the statue that hit the gentleman is put under safeguard, and any other artifacts that are at the scene. I saw hammers and different things. Also, the video taken at the scene clearly identified some persons, real clearly. I think, being a crime and vandalism being against the law, I think our part of the investigation should be to seek, to identify the persons that were doing the damage.
Thank you.
Mayor.
I think that Dr. Patton has said that the scene is secured by the police for the purpose of the investigation.
Investigation is currently going on, and Mr. Moody, and the points that you've made, in a situational investigation, which is an internal investigation, and the state police investigation that is going on, our city manager will not be giving them directions as to what it is that they are to do, not to do, or to look at. This is an impartial state police investigation, and the findings of that investigation, when the state police and the situational investigation will be brought back and presented in its fullest, which looks at every aspect of what has taken place and occurred, and all of the footage of which they have, which all our offices automatically have on their body worn cameras, and it's not a kind of camera that they have to cut on themselves. So it is, it is secured right now, it is protected, and I received, I sent to you all today, you probably haven't had a chance to see it, on yesterday, you wanted me to move forward on the fence, the design has been done. It will be a 10-foot fence. It can start on Tuesday and be completed by Thursday. All of the businesses that are in that area were contacted today. They also received the information, which I sent you about the design, and its impact that will have on that quarter. And it also went through to the Old Town Business Association, so economic development, and their team did that contact today.
Dr. Patton, among the video that's turned over to the state police, I'm requesting that the video showing the state senator giving direction that our police officers be provided as part of the evidence that we provide the state police.
Mayor.
Mayor.
And also, also the 10-foot fence, what are we, what are we protecting at this point? I mean, what we, what we have is pretty much the remnants of vandalism. I was, I was there. Is the granite structures, can they be, I mean, there's no room for any more writing on the granite that I saw. And we've allocated money for the fence, but is that necessary? Can we use barricades? What are we protecting at this point?
I'm going to take that as-
Other than the crime scene.
All right, Mayor, you-
Bill, that's a question for council. Now, let's park that for a second. I want to go to someone who hasn't spoken, and that's Shannon. I think you were, indicated you wanted the floor.
Yes, yes, sir, Mayor, thank you very much. And just, I want to thank all my colleagues as well. Just to set the record straight, one of our council colleagues accused myself and another Vice Mayor of being at the scene and being complicit in supporting vandalism and supporting violence. When we arrived on the scene yesterday at 2:00, we were there to help de-escalate a situation. Also, the sheriff, Michael Moore, was there to try to help de-escalate a situation. We could not involve ourselves in the operation of what the police were and could do. Mr. Moody pulled up in his truck at that time, and he was also there. So his accusation that we were there to support violence and encourage violence is very much inaccurate, unfounded, and inappropriate. I will go on to say that. I have never, I have never in my life supported or advocated for violence or vandalism. My wife and I have been in this city for 30 years. We were married here, our children were born here. We have worked in service of this community to treat all citizens of Portsmouth fairly and equitably. And I will not allow anyone to undermine my credibility and my integrity in this community. And so with that, I just wanted to be clear, that Mr. Moody was there at 2:00, when we were there, in his vehicle, and he drove away. He did not jump out and jump in front of anyone to stop anything that he perceived to be going on.
Mayor, I'd like to respond to that comment.
Moreover, he came back last night, when those individuals were brandishing the sludge hammers and other things, nor did he jump in the middle at that time. So for him to irresponsibly put out on social media and other media outlets that me and the Vice Mayor were complicit to violence is inaccurate and irresponsible. Thank you.
Before-
Mayor, I want, I want to respond to that.
Okay, I'm going to give you a chance. Let's make, let's make sure that we allow everybody have one chance to speak-
Absolutely.
-before we go back to town.
And I ask for the floor.
Mayor, Mayor, I want to respond directly.
You will have your chance to respond. Give everybody a chance to speak. All right.
Great. Mayor?
Yes, yes, ma'am. You have the floor.
Yes, yes, thank you. Thank you, council members, thank you, Mayor. Elizabeth quoted it correctly. I was there yesterday to de-escalate the situation. I arrived on the scene about 2:00. And my purpose was to let the persons, the protesters there, know that we were having a special call meeting yesterday at 5:00, and that we would be making some determination. I asked them to give us time to make that determination with our legal and otherwise, what other decisions that we needed to make. So that was my purpose. I was not there to allow, or to invite, or to assist, or to be complicit with anyone who was there to protest. Everyone has a right to peaceful protest, and that's how it started out. And I was there, of course, when the state senator that he's mentioning, we can go ahead and say who that state senator is, is L. Louise Lucas, President, Pro Tem of the Virginia Senate. And he was there, clearly, to make it known that this was private property, that people had a right to protest, and that no one else was going to be arrested. That was the comment that I heard her mention to police officers in my presence. She was not there to condone, or to allow, or to enforce, or to have anyone. Senator, State Senator L. Louise Lucas, just as anyone else, has a right to free press, right to speech, and a right to protest. And she was there in her capacity for her community, to let people know that they have a right to be there and to express their anger. Now, how it got twisted and turned into a situation that she allowed protesters to do anything is beyond me, because I would not be able to come into your home, or to your business, or to your house, and give an order, and you listen. So the order that is being alligated, that the senator proposed that no one be arrested, or that it was a stand-down, is bullshit to me. And I don't have to sneeze it tonight, I can say it. So the cause for her to be there was to support the protesters. It was not to give any order to the police. We all know on this council that the orders to the chief of police come from the city manager. Now, if we decided, as a council, or if they decided, because we can't get into the day-to-day operation, we know that clearly from a previous situation, where we were not able to get into the day-to-day operations of the chief of police, when our former chief of police was dismissed, and we had no ability to get in and have any day-to-day say into that action. So what we're trying to say today is that the state senator, L. Louise Lucas, President, Pro Tem, has so much power, that she can come in and tell the chief of police not to do her job? I think we got a big problem that we're alleging to. And I think that needs to be addressed. And I want to make my final comment by letting you know that memorials of anyone that is dead belong in a cemetery. We decided that as a council back in 2017. And now we have new laws that have changed, and we have agreed to go into a public hearing, where we will take whatever action we need to take after 30 days. The city of Portsmouth and its residents have endured the visual pain for reminder of this monument long enough. I asked that the monument be covered until the council was able to come up with a lawful action to remove it. And the actions of the protesters on yesterday were not against this age-old monument. Their anger was with George Floyd, Ahmaud Arbery, Trayvon Martin, and countless others, to include the racial injustice of the dismissal of our former chief of police, Tanya Chapman. Where was the force when those actions were being committed? While I don't condone destroying the property, it is past due time for that monument to have been removed. While some people might say that the monuments are reminders of history, and, you know, that whatever the Confederate dead did, but to me, and a lot of the citizens who think and believe and support like me, they think that it is a rebellion to uphold slavery. And to me, and many others, it is a symbol of hate. And that's why the expressions of those protesters yesterday resulted in this. I asked that we have it covered. I asked that we do something to protect it. But now, it is in the state that it is. And now, we are in a state that we are. So I resent anybody trying to put a finger of blame on me, the state senator, or Shannon Glover, or our sheriff, or anyone else who was there, because those protesters had an opportunity to protest, and no one had the right to go and take a mallet, or take a spray paint can, or anything out of their hands. So we just need to deal with what is in front of us now, and what wasn't done last night. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Going around to people who have not yet spoken, I recognize- I recognize Paul Bano. He's the first one I see on the screen.
Well, it was not a good scene, but I'm thankful that we didn't have a whole lot of folk hurt. And I hope at this point that the public will give us time to do our job as the law allows us to. I explained at the onset without cameras, because, you know, I'm not a camera person. But to those folks that was at the monument, that we had guidelines that we had to follow and that we were going to move the monument. But at that point, there was such a feverish pitch that sometime when folk get angry, angry, well, not sometimes. All the time when you get angry, you can't think. I don't care who you are. I try to keep anger out in my life. And I'm hoping that the citizens will keep it out of their life and allow us to do what they want, which is to have this object moved. Again, I'm thankful that a lot of folk did get hurt. And let's do this thing peacefully. And let's not point at one another who's doing who wrong. Again, I can say you're not going to change a Confederate. And a Confederate's not going to change a northern. And what we need to do is to come together on those things that are common to the benefit of the citizens of the city. I don't do planned speeches. Whenever I speak for you, I speak to you from the top. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And before I recognize Nate Clark, we now have a total of 642 people watching this meeting. That's about three times the size of the council chamber, for sure. Nate, I recognize you if you want to make any comments.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Unfortunately, my comments that I made yesterday about the possible injuries and worse came to fruition last night. It's unfortunate that anybody was injured and loss of life occurred. There's a lot of issues going on, and everybody's seen a lot of various videos and posts. And, you know, I'm not going to try to decipher certain things. I wasn't there. I've observed them. The best part, as Dr. Patton has stated, the state police are involved in conducting the investigation. It's also my understanding that the FBI has reached out and offered their assistance in this investigation, which I think is very important because they have extreme abilities to conduct investigations. The statements made earlier about various videos, various videos by various people that have been put on social media and other places have already been secured by law enforcement because a lot of groups and certain things that were posted yesterday have been removed since the event last night. But those documented videos and everything has already been secured, and they will be reviewed by this investigation. At this time, you know, I don't have all the information, and I'm not a part of the investigation. But I'm looking forward to the report from the state police with the assistance of the FBI. Because basically, this was all lawlessness. All these individuals were violating the law. If they're violating the law, they should be dealt with accordingly. I understand at some point, due to the number of police officers that we have, and in addition to the 54 vacancies that we have currently on the police department, it becomes a safety concern to deal with such a situation for a large number of individuals. That is all. The call of the state officers is up to the chief of police with the information she has at hand. I'm not going to make second judgment on her determination decision based on her availability of officers from our jurisdiction and others at the time to deal with the situation at hand. A lot of people don't know that the individual that was injured from the statue falling on him, that rescue was made by our tactical officers with a paramedic that assisted them in there. A lot of people think that the police are anti-this group or that group, and that's not the case. The police are there to protect everyone. A lot of the concerns were with the protesters that were there. There was a major concern that it could be some anti-protesters that would come there and create other problems. And we did not want what happened in Charlottesville to happen here. So the police were there for the safety of everyone, as they should be, not just specific groups. So I hope this is a very thorough investigation. So, you know, there's a lot of things that I've been told. But I can't take everything I'm told as a fact, so I will not repeat it in this forum. So I will leave it to the professionals from the police department, the state police, and the FBI to do a full investigation and hopefully file charges where need be for the crimes that were committed, including and up to the death of individuals at the scene last night. Thank you.
A point of clarification, there was not a death last night. Not as of the current moment.
Well, if I'm incorrect, I'll take that back. But that was an information I had been given recently. Thank you.
That's a rumor as of right at the start of my meeting. All right, I think every member of council has had a chance to speak, and I'm coming back to recognize Bill Moody. Bill, you've got the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to set the record straight on a couple of things my colleague Shannon Glover stated that simply aren't true. When I arrived at the monument last night, the gentleman that got injured was actually being taken out on a stretcher. The damage had already been done. I guess the protesters were shocked and concerned over the injury. So they had stopped the damage. So Bill Moody didn't have a chance to stop anything that was going on. Everybody was milling around. I had a good conversation with the chief that I won't share publicly. But I am concerned about the contents. And I've documented the conversation. And I think the chief at a news conference shared some of that as well. Mr. Glover also made it sound like that I pulled up yesterday at a lengthy time. Actually, I wasn't planning on going by the monument. I was coming back through the tunnel. I went down Court Street, and the police officers were controlling traffic. So I pulled over, and a very nice African-American police officer came up. I rolled the window down, and she told me what was going on. And they weren't involved. They were just trying to keep everybody safe at that point. My two colleagues who were there didn't see them, saw them speaking to people. I'm entitled to my opinion. I also, last night, saw the results of what being on the right side of history looks like. And I think to most people, that right side of history is very concerning. People shouldn't be allowed to go and destroy property. I am glad to hear Councilman Clark say that video has already been secured because the video has a lot. And I won't go any further than that. But I am looking forward to the state police investigation. And I'm even more pleased to hear that the FBI may be involved.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to commend.
You have the floor, Mr. Bano, Paul.
I'd like to really commend the police department with the swiftness that they evacuated that individual that was hurt by the statue. I monitored that particular sequence. And I think it took them about 90 seconds to go within the crowd, inside the crowd and outside the crowd to carry that individual to a place of treatment. So I wanted to say they did a real good job evacuating the injured person.
And to piggyback on your comments, Paul, I also commend the good judgment and the choices made by our public safety officials last night.
Yes.
That contained what could have been a disaster for 80 blocks of our city.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. We're going back around. We do have one question on the floor that Councilman Moody raised, which was, do we still need the fence? And we'll park that while you speak, Lizbeth, and then come back to that.
Thank you. I have another question. And I'm pleased with what I've heard about investigations. And obviously, lots of folks have lots of questions. But it sounds like we will get those answers. Going forward, tonight, tomorrow night, the next day, we have a lot of businesses in our downtown community that are worried and concerned. I know that we were told a little while ago that folks have reached out to the neighbor businesses right around that area. But what would the city manager or police chief want to say going forward? You know, we've been so proud, I've certainly been proud of the very peaceful civil discourse that's happened in the community in recent weeks. I mean, we had a huge crowd on Saturday night and a very peaceful protest. I don't know how many people it was, but it was a lot. And, you know, I was so proud of that. And how do we reassure all those restaurants on High Street or the residents who live nearby or anywhere in the city that we're going to be able to keep the peace going forward? What is the plan?
Dr. Patton.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council, as I indicated earlier today, that through economic development, reaching out not only to the businesses that are in close proximity to the Court Street corridor, along with Chief Green, and ensuring over the next weeks, and I say weeks because we are not looking to have our public hearing until July 28th. A plan is being put in place to increase the policing in the corridors of downtown. And as we indicated last night and through today, that, and I'm going to say, although you're coming back to it, that the fencing will help with deterring people who just want to get in or close to that proximity for whatever reasons at this point. Although there is damage to the monument, we believe as staff and having talked with our chief that securing that, you cannot close, we can't put a fence in there that hides it. But we can put a fence in there to protect what we have. So that plan will be coming forward. And I will share just how our policing over the next weeks, particularly around downtown area, will be in place.
To speak to the question that Lizbeth, I think the proof lies in what was accomplished by our police last night. They provided public safety to 79 and 1/2 other blocks that remain safe. Not one single pane of glass, not even on Court Street, was broken. And their presence contained it to a very small location. And so there's comfort in that. And by saying that, we're not condoning vandalism. Vandalism is still illegal. But it did not spread. It did not escalate. And I think we are very right to commend our public safety. They get up every day, not only put on a uniform, but they train for events like this. And that training paid off last night. And let's get back to Bill's question. We need that fence. The monument's going to be there until we move it. Unfortunately, as we discussed last night, the General Assembly put a 30-day public hearing notice. So that protracts the schedule. We need the fence to continue to protect that part of 400 block of Court Street. Does anybody disagree with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other? Yes, sir. Is that you, Shannon?
Yes, sir. May I ask a question? Or this is kind of directed to Dr. Patton. I did have a conversation, Dr. Patton.
She was on the phone. I want to make sure that she hears what you have to say.
Okay, this is for all my colleagues and Dr. Patton.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Patton, I did have a conversation with Sheriff Michael Moore this afternoon. And the conversation included, you know, protecting our public safety and our public property. And as the mayor indicated, you know, we know that the police force is doing a very stand-up job in getting it done. But the sheriff did also indicate that he has the capacity to maybe help provide some law enforcement in addition to what the police have if there's some gaps. And also, a lot of those sheriff's deputies are community folks. They know the community folks. And, you know, they had the bike team down there and other folks. So it may be good to kind of talk with the sheriff and see how they can complement our law enforcement and have more feet on the ground, just to let folks know and reassure the business community down there and the citizens that we're doing our best to make sure that everyone is safe and protected.
Very good point. And you can convey that to Chief Green.
Yes, can I speak?
Yes, you may.
Thank you, Mr. Glover. And I would like to just say, because whether or not, and I have shared it, but there's so much have been gone on in the 18th day, which is the day of George Floyd's death. With that said, our police have been called numerous times to Newport News for mutual aid, at least three to four times to Virginia Beach, called to Hampton. And so our police have really been stepping up to help everybody else who had looting, destruction of property, and all kinds of other things. So I will reach out to the sheriff. I will speak with the chief tonight and let him know that we will sit down and have a meeting to discuss how can he help us in this time when we know that our police department has been pushed, which, when you're called, you go. So I thank you for that, and I shall follow up with that this evening.
Thank you, Mayor.
Deborah, what's our count of viewers now?
680.
680. Paul, are you asking for the floor?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to remind the public that we're in the middle of a pandemic. And that when you're in crowds where folk are screaming and hollering and full of anger, a lot of times, if they're infected, those particles are going further than six feet and are coming out, you know, out of their mouths. So I want you to, you know, keep that in mind and be careful when we do assemble like that and not to take care of yourselves. Again, please remember the pandemic and the things to protect yourself. And again, when folk are angry, those viruses are further than normal. So keep that in mind.
Paul, that's a very good point and a good point to end on. And I just put my mask on, and I urge all of our viewers that are currently looking at this livestream to put your mask on when you go outside. This virus is not dead. It's coming back. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for your participation.